Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We do have one member of the school board who wishes to participate in our meeting electronically. As indicated in Board Policy, BEE, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Location, the board member must make such request, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the board must approve the request by majority vote of the members present. School Board Member Rebecca Amon has made such a request. Ms. Amon, are you with us?
I am. Thank you Chairwoman Searls-Law.
Great. Happy to hear your voice and your request for this evening.
Yes, I would like to attend tonight's meeting electronically because I am currently in Leesburg, Virginia with the Minchville High School golf team as they will be playing in the state championship tomorrow morning.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for representing the whole board at that event.
My pleasure.
Ms. Amon's request, what is the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you so much. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Other than go team, go Monarchs. Please call the roll.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searls-Law.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Saul. I hope I don't mess this up. Oxme Numes. And she's an eleventh grader at Denby High School. And if you would, repeat your name at the podium and tell us a little bit about yourself.
So my name is Saul Axum Nunez. I am from Denby High School. I am in the National Honor Society, Hispanic National Honor Society. Okay. Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Mitchell, auditorium guests, and viewing audience. My name is Saul Axum Nunez and I am a junior representing Denby High School. This evening, I would like to share a poem because I hope you find inspiration in its message as I have. The title of the poem is "Life Steps" by Katherine Pulcifer. Our entire life is made up of choices. What we decide, the action we take, the attitude we display, all represents the steps of life. Sometimes we take two steps forward and one step back. Some of us take a baby step, some of us take a giant step. But the secret is not to let the one step back turn into a failure. Learn from backwards steps and keep stepping forward in this dance called life. Now please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You now may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. And do you have family with you today? Hi, Mom. Thank you so much for entrusting her to Newport News Public Schools. She's such a shining star. We're glad you're here tonight. The next item on tonight's agenda are school board recognition. So Dr. Mitchell, if you would, join me at the podium.
Good evening. Tonight I have the pleasure of presenting this month's honorees, which happens to be the Newport News Public School Board. Training and development are top priorities for the Newport News School Board. As part of its collective effort to maintain effective leadership, the board has participated in numerous development programs, conferences, and workshops through the National School Boards Association and the Virginia School Boards Association. This evening, our school board members are receiving their own awards for their dedication to advancing their expertise from the Virginia School Boards Association. The VSBA Academy, as it's called, provides training in effective leadership and governance to school board members and school division staff. Each year, VSBA recognizes board members for their dedication to improving their skills through conferences on leadership, school laws, strategic planning, and legislative issues. Each of the persons being recognized this evening has received a certificate from the VSBA. These awards honor their participation in the academy's programs for the past two years. School Board Chairman Lisa Searls-Law, Vice Chairman Dr. Terry Best, and School Board Member Douglas Brown earned the Award of Distinction for their participation. Board Member Gary Hunter earned the Award of Excellence. Board Member Rebecca Amon earned an Award of Recognition. In addition, Superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell earned an Award of Excellence. Award of Distinction honorees, which include Ms. Searls-Law, Dr. Best, and Mr. Brown, will be recognized at a special luncheon during the Virginia School Boards Association annual conference which is going to be held next month. Board members have also received a distinctive lapel pin to symbolize their commitment to effective school board governance through participation in the academy. So board members, on behalf of the students, staff, and citizens of Newport News, we thank you for your dedication and leadership of this school division and congratulate you on your awards. Would you please join me in a round of applause? At this time, we're going to take about a seven-minute break because we are going to, actually, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's School Board Spotlight. So our meeting will resume following the School Board Spotlight. So we'll stand in recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
During the waning summer weeks, NNPS teachers were invited to explore innovative teaching strategies to unlock their potential at the Sixth Annual Innovate Conference, held at Woodside High School. Organized by the Department of Teaching and Learning, the Innovate Conference offered a dynamic learning environment where educators could exchange ideas, learn new strategies, and become a catalyst for positive change in their schools. Over four hundred fifty educators attended, with the opportunity to attend up to four educational sessions from one hundred twenty unique offerings. Presenters included NNPS staff, school leaders, local partners, business representatives, and world-renowned educators. In between sessions, educators toured a myriad of educational technologies and resources at the Innovation Station, offering teachers hands-on demonstrations and practical ideas for utilizing these tools in the classroom. And at the STEM Showcase, educators engaged with NNPS students who shared how STEM activities make learning fun while also bolstering critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration. For attending the conference, teachers earned five recertification points towards their teaching license. So once again, the Innovate Conference was a resounding success, giving hundreds of educators a transformative educational experience that will equip them to inspire a love of learning in their students. During the summer months, the great outdoors becomes the classroom for high school students fulfilling their physical education requirements. Outdoor education is a three-week course offered through two sessions during the summer months. With a focus on various outdoor skills to enhance both mental and physical well-being, outdoor education inspires students to experience physical education in a new and exciting way. This past summer, over one hundred students participated in outdoor education where skilled educators first complete specialized training to confidently and safely guide students through daily excursions. Each morning, buses transport students to Newport News Park where they fill their day with boating, hiking, fishing, archery, camping skills, and a variety of outdoor experiences. After completing Outdoor Education I, students are welcome to enroll in Outdoor Education II, which offers even more exciting adventures such as a day-long canoe trip, extended biking tracks, and an overnight camping experience where students work together to set up their tents, campfire, and campsite. Community partners offer even more unique experiences for both outdoor education courses. Students learned aquatic safety, water rescue techniques, and played underwater games with the trained staff at Brittingham Midtown Aquatic Center. The Mariners Museum took students on scenic kayak trips around the waters of Mariners Lake and freewheel bicycle shop located on Warwick Boulevard, taught students about bike repairs and maintenance to ensure a safe ride. By completing outdoor education courses, high school students have the opportunity to satisfy their health and physical education graduation requirements in the summer, earning half a credit for each course completed. This approach creates more room in their schedules for rigorous courses of study during the school year as they work towards an advanced studies diploma, while also learning skills, safety practices, responsibility, teamwork, and self-awareness in an engaging outdoor classroom. For students who have the abilities, dedication, and enthusiasm to further their artistic skills, Summer Institute for the Arts is the perfect opportunity to grow and expand their creativity. For the thirty-fifth year, rising eighth through twelfth grade students were enrolled in a structured course of study in music, visual arts, or theater. The summer program is hosted at Woodside High School, home of the Arts and Communications Magnet Program, and offered two concurrent sessions in performing arts and visual arts. Students in the performing arts session, including band, chorus, drama, and orchestra, spent three weeks sharpening their musical and performance skills. The session finished in dramatic fashion with students putting their artistic skills on display for families and friends during a theater and music showcase performance. Visual arts students spent six weeks creating an impressive portfolio using a range of media and techniques. A rotating team of talented educators challenged students to stretch their abilities while introducing them to new methods and tools. As their session came to a close, families were invited to tour the impressive collection of student masterpieces during the final art show. For successfully completing this intensive summer program, performing arts students received a half credit towards their graduation requirements. But beyond the credit and recognition, Summer Institute for the Arts allowed students to build self-esteem while discovering their own depth of potential and ability through the creative arts. Since it takes a village to raise a child, the youth development team is working hard to activate the village and increase community involvement for all students. At the start of the school year, the NNPS Youth Development Team hosted a community partner open house at Crittenham Middle School. Nineteen different organizations attended the informational event, including local businesses, health services, community initiatives, nonprofits, museums, and faith-based organizations. During the presentation, the youth development team, which includes family and community engagement specialists, outlined the importance of community partnerships with Newport News Public Schools and the benefits for students in the form of providing mentorships and career experiences, improving mental health, leading clubs, or sponsoring unique learning activities. Thomas Turner, a senior at Heritage High School, shared his personal story of growth and achievement through his involvement with my brother's keeper mentoring program. By supporting public education, these caring organizations play a huge role in supporting classroom teachers, empowering families, and offering a nurturing adult in the lives of our students. As a result of this open dialogue, new initiatives are already being planned for this school year, including financial literacy workshops for parents, civic engagement training for high school students, and small groups to strengthen families.
In Newport News Public Schools, Magnet and Specialty Programs are available to elementary, middle, and high school students to offer customized learning experiences as students become college, career, and citizen-ready. On October twenty-first, Newport News Public Schools invites all families to discover programs that empower your future at the Magnet and Specialty Programs Preview Night. Environmental Science, Performing Arts, Aviation, Health Sciences, Maritime Engineering, and STEM are just a few of the Magnet and Specialty Programs offered across Newport News Public Schools. Visit Gildersleeve Middle School anytime between 5:30 and 7:00 PM to browse the variety of options, talk directly with staff and students, and learn how Magnet and Specialty Programs can help your students find joy in learning as they explore career options and empower themselves for a bright future.
I hope you enjoyed this month's School Board Spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining. And a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. Michelle Nordean. There she is, our PTA president.
Good evening, Chairman Searls-Law, Dr. Mitchell, and school board members. For those who haven't heard me speak, my name is Michelle Nordean and I am the Newport News Council PTA's president. I would like to give everyone an update on the state of our PTAs in our school district. Council's second membership challenge is called a membership is running through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. The PTA at each level with the most PTA members with a minute... Oh, that didn't work out, sorry. This challenge runs through February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The PTA at each level with the highest percentage of PTA members will receive a monetary reward from council at our April general membership meeting. As of this morning, we have one thousand nine hundred and forty PTA members in the school district. This is a decrease of a little over four thousand, four hundred members from last year. Our PTAs need your help. PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. If you support our mission, please join a PTA in your community. You do not need to have a child in a Newport News school to join a PTA. You do not need to volunteer at PTA events. We would greatly appreciate it if you could volunteer, but we understand not everyone can. This is why we want to let you know that by becoming a PTA member, your once-a-year payment of your dues will help children in our district at the local, state, and national level as we advocate for school quality, health and safety, and infrastructure. Please visit Newport News Council PTA's Facebook page and use the link found at the top of our featured post to join as a parent, a grandparent, teacher, staff, or as a community member. Your support will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Jim Batterson. And the board welcomes a past board member and chair, so we're delighted to have you with us tonight. Absolutely.
Good evening. I'm Jim Batterson, a resident of Newport News, Newport News Public School graduate, a former Minchville High School teacher, and former chair of this board. When I spoke to you in August regarding the inadequacies of your current procedure JBP toward meeting the Journey 2025 Strategic Plan, I provided members with a white paper containing details, data, and background to my presentation. Much of the data I presented that evening came from the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, a national survey conducted by the CDC every two years since nineteen ninety-one. Tonight, I've distributed an updated report from the 2023 survey results just out last week in the CDC's Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, specifically disparities in school connectedness, unstable housing, experiences of violence, mental health, suicidal thoughts and behaviors among transgender and cisgender high school students, United States, 2023. In this update, we see the number of high school students who self-identify as transgender has gone up from one point eight percent to three point three percent, and those questioning their sexuality at another two point two percent. So for Newport News, this means approximately between two hundred and sixty to four hundred and twenty of our high school students are in these cohorts. The data represented in the CDC paper show that these students are significantly more likely to be bullied at school, have skipped school because they felt unsafe, seriously considered suicide, and to have experienced unstable housing, which means spending a significant number of nights outside their parents' home. In other words, these are students who are very much in need of services but are denied them due to the very narrow definition of transgender student memorialized in your procedure JB-P. I remind you of four specific areas that you can address in modifying JBP to bring relief and thus protect, support, and give comfort to these several hundred students. While all official communications in the schools would continue to use the student's official name, sex, and gender as listed in school records, I suggest in addition to your policy, where in an informal day-to-day situation such as the classroom, hallways, athletic fields, or at the mall, teachers, counselors, and staff will make their best efforts to call a student by that student's preferred nickname and pronouns regardless of whether it conforms to an accepted variation on their official name or even to their sex or gender on record. Encouraging discussions between teachers and students. We have unstable households in Newport News, lacking an adult presence that children can trust. And additionally, we are a military community with parents on deployment. Students should feel free and even encouraged to engage in confidential discussions with trusted adult teachers and counselors without worrying about parents being informed. In discussions with students, school personnel should encourage students to confide in parents or some other trusted adult but shall not be obligated to break a student's confidence in any way. These modifications cost nothing and would move significantly toward addressing the needs of all of our students. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Jane Martin.
Good evening. I'm Jane Martin and here once again representing my daughter Emily Woolham, who has been banned from NNPS property. I've been told that on the NNPS side of the matter is closed. The matter is not closed on our side because Emily is not allowed to go to Kiln Creek, her daughter's school. If the ban cannot be lifted for all the schools, we are requesting that it be lifted for Kiln Creek Elementary. We would like to thank Dr. Mitchell for lifting the ban on email so that Emily has been able to communicate with the school and Jasmine's teachers. We really appreciate that, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you. In the packets I emailed to all of you, I included a letter from Jasmine's birth injury lawyer. Amberly Hammer has represented Jasmine's interest since her diagnosis of oxygen deprivation at birth. I would like to read from that letter. This letter was written before the email ban was lifted. The purpose of this letter is to request that Emily Woolham be permitted to actively participate in the education of her daughter Jasmine Woolham Chek without constraints and limitations. I represent the interests of Jasmine Woolham Chek in an unrelated matter with respect to a brain injury she suffered at birth. I am intimately familiar with Jasmine's disabilities and the profound impact they have had and will continue to have on her education. I have personally observed the positive and profound impact Ms. Woolham has had in Jasmine's life and in Jasmine's progress in education. Jasmine has an IEP in place to address her disabilities. Ms. Woolham has played an integral part in ensuring that Jasmine has had what she needs to prosper to her fullest potential despite her disabilities. Although Jasmine's father, Kadeen Chek, is actively involved in Jasmine's life, Ms. Woolham is and has been Jasmine's primary advocate throughout her educational journey. As a lifelong public school teacher, Ms. Woolham possesses the knowledge, insight, and experience to work with Jasmine's educators who will assist in establishing her IEP. Barring Ms. Woolham from contact with the school and Jasmine's teachers will have a deleterious effect on Jasmine's development and progress which she and the family have worked so hard to foster. It is in Jasmine's best interest to have her mother, Emily Woolham, intimately involved in her education. The parental role in education is vital, especially in the circumstance of a disabled child. It would be improper to limit Jasmine's right and need to have her mother participate in her education. I kindly ask that you lift all restrictions on Ms. Woolham as it relates to her ability to participate in the education of her daughter Jasmine. Jasmine's lawyer realizes how important it is for Emily to be able to go to the school if needed. We are hoping that NNPS will reconsider and come to that same realization. As always, thank you so much for your time and I appreciate you listening to what I have to say. Thank you.
Gabrielle Marquez.
Yes, good evening to the board and to the Honorable Chairwoman Searls-Law and all these good people. My name is Gabriel Marquez. I am speaking on behalf of the Tye Water Chapter of the DSA. I'd like to remind the board that citizens are still greatly concerned about Policy JB-P and Procedures JB, or Policy JB and Procedure JB-P, particularly with the upcoming elections. And I humbly ask that the board please prioritize addressing our collective concerns. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Eric Barton.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about the safety on our buses. Right now, we have done a lot of work and I think we've made a lot of strides inside the schools to make it a little bit safer, cracking down on some of the rules and making them a little bit better. But the buses are still a severe issue. When we have students that fight in a classroom, they get escorted by security. They get in a fight on a bus, all we can do is tell them, please stop. We can't touch them. We can't break them up. We can't do anything with it. We ask for security sometimes. They don't want to come out to the buses. We'd be out there. We ask for the police. They tell us, just ride it up and give it to administrator tomorrow. These kids are beating each other up. We've seen kids with bloody noses and bruises and parents are getting upset with, you know, the kids getting beat up on the buses. But we can't do anything about it. We have it happen at school. We'll ask for administrator. They just talk to them at the door and tell them, all right, need to get back on the bus. You still got to take them home. I can't drive that bus safely while also having to watch that mirror the whole time because they constantly want to go back at each other again. Some of these bus routes are an hour long. That's a long time to have one eye on a road while the other eye's in a mirror. We're not asking for y'all to suspend these students from the schools. We need them in the schools. But riding that bus is a privilege. And if you can't act right, we really can't have you on the bus because you're endangering not just yourself but we're endangering the general public. We're endangering the drivers. We're endangering the other students out there. And we really need some help getting it back under control. Right now, it's solely up to administrators. The transportation supervisors can only document it and send it to administrators and hope that they make a judgment, but we have no control over it at all. So we're just asking for y'all's help. Thank you.
Nambia Dietrich.
Hi. So my name's Nambia Dietrich. I learned about this meeting about twenty minutes ago, so please excuse that I'm not as prepared. So I'm actually a Newport News graduate and I just moved back here from south suburbs of Chicago. My son attends Ella Fitzgerald as a sixth. My son attends Ella Fitzgerald, is a sixth grader, I'm sorry. And I am just here to say I am unpleasant about the behaviors that is happening within the school. I've had to call the school the second day of school because there's kids cursing in the classroom, fighting in the classroom, and nothing is to be done. I just had a situation where my son was on the bus and a kid, I'm gonna say attacked him. I let Dr. Ransom know, he was promptly, you know, requested for the videos from on the bus and he called me today and said, hey, we got the videos, I'm here to, you know, I'm here with your son to look at the videos. And today I asked my son, how was the problem addressed? And he said they gave him a warning. And even it came out of Dr. Ransom's mouth that it was very random, the attack, that was on my son was very random. So I'm just kinda here, just kinda, what can we do about it in the behaviors that's happening in the school? Because as Eric said, it's unacceptable and it's unsafe and I'm not very happy that kids are just putting their hands on my son for no reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? Thank you for your comments and thoughts this evening. We're gonna move on to Section 3, the Consent Agenda, which includes 3.01, minutes from the work session from September 17, 2024; 3.02, minutes from the regular meeting September 17, 2024; 3.03, financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for June that were revised, and September 2024, and child nutrition reports; 3.04, the Personnel Report; 3.05, easement agreement with Dominion Energy; 3.06, budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alger, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
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 Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. We will now move on to Section Action Items, 4.01, the Proposed CIP Plan Budget. Pass it off to Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At this time, Mr. Rusty Fairheart will come to you to provide an update on the Proposed CIP Plan Budget.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Mitchell. I have the pleasure to be with you this evening to seek approval of the FY26, FY30 Capital Improvement Plan. So the plan, as it was presented to you at the work session last month, I'm gonna highlight a couple of the changes. You can see in the first year, FY26, the total request is for 225.1 million. As you recall, we shifted some unfunded needs from FY25 into FY26. Some of the changes that you'll see, one at the top in HVAC replacement, we reduced the amount that we paid for the passage HVAC project that was funded through with FY24 CIP funds, but we added the project for Menchville High School based on the condition of the HVAC unit there. Another change that you'll see is on Warwick High School for the renovation. We removed the design fees because they were also funded in FY25. And we did include the Denby High School design and construction project total cost and the renovation fee there for $58.8 million. You'll also see safe and secure entrances. We reduced the Yates Project because we also funded that with FY24 money. And then you'll see an addition at the bottom, certainly you'll see buses, 7.2 million. That's just the additional resources that we weren't provided to sufficiently replace our fleet. But you'll see the $2 million, that's to support our one-to-one technology initiative and that's gonna be an ongoing request moving forward. The five-year total is 370.9 million and we did pull projects in from the Master Facilities Plan for FY30. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions from the board at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just make one comment and that's in regards to, I think this is a very good budget. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into developing this budget by all parties. And when we originally created Policy FB for facilities planning, this was exactly the kind of budget that I was envisioning that as projects were unfunded in one year, that we would roll that into the first year of the very next year and that's what we've done here. I can, you know, very credibly say that I believe that this budget represents what our needs are in terms of our facilities and we have those needs listed in the first year and that we're, you know, sticking to what I've talked about a lot over the years, which is asking for what is needed in the first year of the budget and allowing for that process to unfold as it does with city council and they'll fund what they can, but we'll continue to ask for what is needed in the first year. So I appreciate that the budget reflects that. Just one question in regards to the HVAC replacement because I see it's a one lump sum. Do you have any idea off the, you know, off the top of your head just which schools that would benefit from the HVAC replacement if we give them 33 million?
Off the top of my head, Metro High School's the biggest. We've also got some work at Booker T. Washington we're gonna do. We're trying to fund that with some resources we have currently. And then the others are kind of replacement revitalizations throughout the school division. But the big addition was Metro and we just didn't feel like we could wait based on where it is and the capital improvement planning process behind Denby and Warwick. It's at a critical failure point.
Any other comments? I do appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate the transparency too for us to come along, to be able to share with council. I think one thing that plays in for me for this is our use of ESER funds and I am just really proud of the division that we were able to relieve some of the strain that we had for CIP funding issues. And I think that that speaks well to our planning and I think council has been able to recognize that as well, so hats off.
And you all as well as the board for allowing us to use those funds that way.
Absolutely, thank you so much. All right, do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve the FY2026 to FY2030 Proposed Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amon?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Searl's Law?
Four.
Motion passes 7-0.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. So we will move on to Section 5, Reports and Information. We have 5.01, our new and revised policies. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Ms. Tracy Brooks is going to come before you to share some new and revised policies. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you. Well, good evening, Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Members of the Board, and Dr. Mitchell. It's a pleasure to share highlights from six new and revised policies with you this evening. As you know, one of the major roles of the school board is to set the policy direction for the school division. So we are fortunate to have two board members returning to the Policy Committee this year, Dr. Best and Mrs. Amon, along with principals, administrators, a teacher representative, and our school board and school division attorneys. This evening, I will share six new and revised policies with you in two groups. First are those that were required by new state legislation and as you are aware, we typically begin each policy year by revising our current policies or developing new ones to ensure that we meet the most recent state mandates. And second is a policy that we developed to support best practices in the school division. Now, there are five policies resulting from recent state legislation that I will highlight this evening and they address a wide range of areas, from a new policy in support of the Virginia Literacy Act to revisions to the school board's policy on participation in meetings virtually to a new requirement on fentanyl education and awareness. Our first policy this evening is to the school division's statement of non-discrimination for our programs, activities, and employment practices to align it with the state code and federal law. This statement is placed in our publications, on our websites, and on our employment notices and applications. So in addition to the categories of race, religion, national origin, sex, age, veteran status, disability, and others in our current non-discrimination statement, we will expand it to include ethnicity. The Virginia Literacy Act, which became effective for this current school year, requires the school board to adopt a division-wide literacy plan for pre-kindergarten through the eighth grade as a part of the school division's comprehensive educational program. And as you may recall, this board approved the school division's literacy plan at your meeting this past June. So our new policy reflects the alignment of our literacy plan with the Virginia Literacy Act and in keeping with the act, the literacy plan will be posted on our website and will be updated as needed. Now, our next policy was revised to include state law that currently allows school board members to participate in meetings virtually, as we are doing this evening, instead of attending in person when certain conditions are met. There are two new provisions for school board members requesting to participate remotely for the purpose of determining a quorum. Now, if a school board member is a person with a disability or a caregiver as defined in the state code, then the board member's remote participation in the meeting will count towards the board's quorum as if the individual was physically present. School board members attending the meeting must continue to vote on each member's request to attend virtually and the votes must be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Now, currently, we have a policy that requires the school division to provide instruction to students on the use and misuse of alcohol, tobacco, other drugs, and gambling. We revised the policy to include the new state requirement for school divisions to provide information on fentanyl education and awareness developed by the Virginia Department of Education to each student in grades nine through 12 within the first two weeks of school. So to meet this requirement, our school division disseminated the information to our high school students within the designated timeframe. Now, this last policy resulting from state legislation is on internet privacy and includes the school board's commitment to comply with the Government Data Collection and Dissemination Practices Act. It requires the school board to adopt a policy on the information that school divisions collect and store automatically on our website. Our policy also states that the information collected about visits to our website is not used to personally identify individuals. Instead, the information is used to ensure that our website is useful by monitoring the amount of traffic visiting the website and the type of information searched for most often. The school division is also required to state whether or not we use cookies on our website. So our policy states that our website does not place any cookies on school division computers to remember information about users' visits to the site. The last policy that I will share with you this evening is not required by state law to be in school board policy, but is new and works to support best practices in the school division. The new policy provides guidance to employees on their use of social media. We recognize that many of our employees use social media and this new policy guidance applies when using a personal device or one provided by the school division. The proposed policy emphasizes that the guidelines for functioning in an electronic world are the same as standards stipulated in our current policy on staff conduct and in our technology acceptable use procedure. Now, while we recognize that employees retain the right to keep their personal interests and business separate from their job duties and responsibilities, our employees are in the unique position within our community to serve as role models and leaders for our students. So for that reason and others, employees are expected to exercise professional judgment when using social media. Now, under the policy, social media sites may be used to facilitate communication among groups of students or members of the school community to further our instructional program and school-approved activities such as athletics and clubs. Employees are expected to conduct all social media communications in keeping with this new policy and our current staff conduct policy and are responsible for what they write or present on social media. All reports of a possible violation of the new policy will be investigated by our Human Resources Department and could result in disciplinary action. Now, as I conclude my report this evening, I wanted to revisit our timeline for implementing the five-year review of our 11 policy chapters. So in rounding out this calendar year, we will review the first three policy chapters in year five of our timeline on basics, foundations and basics, education agency relations, and on school-community-home relations. And following these chapters, we will begin the review of the School Board Governance Chapter as we enter the new year in 2025. So in terms of our next steps, the new and revised policies will come before the school board for action at your November 19 meeting. And once approved, the new and revised policies will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So this concludes my report this evening. Joining me are Dr. Nina Ferris, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Lynn Wallen, Director of Legal Services. So we would be happy to respond to your questions and to note your suggestions. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions at this time? I know you will be hearing from us.
Yes, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time. Okay, we'll move on to Section 5, Reports and Information. 5.02, Local Plan for Gifted Education. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Dr. Kimberly Beckerdite, Supervisor of Gifted Services, is going to review with you the Local Plan for Gifted Education. And as you are aware, this is a state requirement that whomever is in that seat, and right now it is Dr. Beckerdite, comes before the board to share the plan and at some point, it will be on the agenda for approval.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Searl's Law, Vice Chair Dr. Best, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Mitchell. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening to share the proposed 2025-2030 Local Plan for the Gifted. During this presentation, I will share with you the purposes of the regulations governing the educational services for gifted students and why NNPS creates a local plan. I will also review the methodology for developing the local plan with our stakeholders, the 2025-2030 Gifted Program Model, goals of the local plan, and finally, our next steps. The gifted regulations are a framework for school districts to design and implement a local plan for the gifted. Each school district must have the plan approved by the school board and then on a rotation will submit the plan for a technical review process to gain feedback on the plan. After our technical review of our current local plan, feedback was shared with various stakeholder groups, including our families, students, teachers, administrators, and senior staff. We solicited feedback on the current plan. We identified gaps and sought recommendations from our stakeholders. We also began drafting goals for the plan's revision. Based on the feedback from the committee, we expanded the elementary gifted program from 16 gifted sites to every elementary school offering the gifted program for eligible students. The committee completed a literature review of other districts' local plans for the gifted. We wanted to see the program models, the implementation, and the best practices used in our surrounding areas. Again, based on feedback from the committee, we expanded the middle school gifted program from four gifted centers to all middle schools, offering the gifted program for qualified students. The committee then began to revise the plan and sought input from our stakeholders. Once the plan was developed, we then had the Once the plan was developed, we then had the local plan committee sessions held with various stakeholder groups, which are listed on this slide. On the screen, you will see the proposed gifted services program model. One recommended change from the group was at the elementary K-two level. While in the past, we have offered the primary gifted program, or P tag, for only qualified students, the committee recommended that we move to a talent development program. As part of this model, we have renamed the K-one program to the Explore program, which includes a push-in and pull-out, or whole-group lessons focused with the goal of developing talent, and a talent pipeline for the second-grade gifted program. Under this model, we will work with all kindergarten and first-grade classes to front-load skills and to build capacity, not only on our students, but also our teachers. Another name, or another change, was the name for the Grade Two program to the Expedition program, which enriches the learning experience and sets the foundation for Grades Three through Five Cluster Gifted Program. In Grades Three through Eight, we now have the full-time gifted cluster model at every one of our elementary and middle schools. And these programs provide a seamless transition from elementary to middle school, and then from middle school to high school, with gifted program options available at all levels. At the high school level, we have Honors, AP, IB, Dual Enrollment, the Governor's School for Science and Technology, Early College, Magnet, and Specialty Programs. Now, I would like to share a little bit more with you about our Explore program. The students will no longer be identified and gifted in K and One. Rather, all students will participate in the Explore Talent Development Program. This allows for a more inclusive program for Newport News public schools and builds a foundation on the five Cs, including critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. The program aims to enrich the learning experiences while also training our kindergarten and first-grade teachers in gifted characteristics and strategies. Teachers in kindergarten and first grade will be trained to use our observation tool and to identify those characteristics of gifted learners, as well as develop a talent pipeline for the second-grade Expedition Program. The second-grade Expedition Program will build on those talents and skills that we started in kindergarten and first grade. With a focus on those five Cs, the inquiry process, higher-level and analytical thinking, this program will enrich the learning experience and set that foundation for our students transitioning into our third through fifth-grade gifted cluster program. On the screen are the goals for our local plan. The first goal is identification of students kindergarten through twelfth grade. Through the Explore and Expedition Talent Development Programs and our ongoing referral process, we are able to build capacity of students qualifying for our gifted program. This leads into our second goal of ensuring that we have equitable representation of students in gifted and advanced programs. NMPS strives to maintain a gifted program that is as diverse as our student population. The goal of professional development is found throughout our local plan goals, as we train staff and partner with other departments in the referral and identification process. Our professional development focuses on understanding the characteristics of gifted learners from culturally, linguistically, and economically diverse backgrounds and mentoring new teachers. We also offer training on the gifted competencies as set forth by the VDOE for any staff member in Newport News through our five Canvas modules, as well as in-person sessions. The goal of delivery of K-12 services and curriculum for gifted learners go hand in hand. We have worked to streamline the curriculum. This includes writing extensions and enrichment lessons geared for differentiation for our students. All of our lessons are aligned with the NMPS curriculum and are included on the unit guide documents, which are produced by the K-12 Department of Teaching and Learning. Finally, our goal of parent, family, and community involvement. The first step was to revise our gifted services website to provide families with additional information about the gifted program K-12. We will continue to offer events and activities relating to the academic and social and emotional needs of our gifted learners, as well as opportunities for gifted and advanced learners that are out in, about in our community. Finally, the next steps. The next steps include finalizing development of our Explore Talent Development Program and lessons. We will also make revisions to the local plan based on our final input from stakeholders. Finally, we will seek approval from the school board on the plan and then submit the approved plan to the VDOE. I'm now available to take questions at this time.
Board members, do you have questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question. Yes, um, what percentage of students are identified as gifted in our district?
I would say, right now, not including our kindergartners, because we have not referred those yet, but we are at ten percent.
Ten percent, thank you.
Dr. Best?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, I, I like the idea that the K through One, you're like identifying the kids and the lessons will hopefully pull out the, the, um, talents and their gifts and things like that. I'm just wondering, so the teachers will be trained to identify with different, I guess, a supplement to what they're already doing?
Yes, ma'am.
So my question is kind of, one of the complaints from teachers is that we give them an additional thing to do without taking something off the plate. So what additional training, hours, responsibilities, as far as teachers are concerned with, with this?
Absolutely, that's a wonderful question. What we plan on doing with the Explore program is having the gifted services staff come in and model lessons in the classroom, have the teachers actually watch us, so that we are building capacity within the teachers. We've also created modules as well as in-person sessions on the gifted characteristics, especially from our special populations. So what we would like to do is to provide them lessons that they can use and implement right away within the classroom that are going to spark that creativity and that critical thinking in the students, while partnering with the gifted services staff to also help them to identify students to refer.
One more. For the three through five cluster, so, is there like a tag teacher for that class? So they are, the credential is a tag teacher for that?
Yes, ma'am. We have identified teachers of the gifted at every grade level three through five. And so those teachers are required to complete the gifted competency course or earn an endorsement in gifted education. The gifted competency courses are a module based on what the VDOE says that teachers of the gifted need to have on characteristics, social, emotional, uh, curricular, um, models and differentiation, questioning, special populations, and twice exceptional students.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I'm gonna say, uh, thank you. This, this is, uh, the redesign of the program that I've long, um, longed for and argued for, and I really appreciate this, um, this new look at it, that we're giving every student an opportunity to be part of the gifted program at every school. And that's really, um, a game changer to me, and I think that that's gonna be a wonderful way we're building capacity, uh, even at the, at the lowest levels to go all the way, all the way forward. So I'm really excited about what our gifted program is gonna do for, um, students and what it would have even meant for my children, because this was what I wish was in place when I was, um, going through that process. And then, just, so just along with that, I think, um, as a parent, there's probably gonna need to be a lot of education, because now the system is completely different than when I was arguing for my own child to try to get into gifted education, right, uh, years prior. So are there some seminars and some, uh, some dates that you have planned for parents and, 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 and some, uh, lays, uh, a- areas on the website where they can go and look at videos and things like that, and make sure that they can get educated on, how do I make sure that my child gets identified if that's something that I want for my child?
Absolutely, and you're already ahead of us. So we redesigned our website to include a family section, and so we are constantly putting up information for our families. We already have, um, some referral information, some characteristics, and then, should this be approved, then we will go ahead and, uh, roll out our family and community engagement piece. I'm anticipating both in-person and Zoom webinars to hit everybody that we need to, to come, and then we're also gonna have information on our website, and then we'll have, uh, information go home with families.
And then, one, one other question, just for, for a family like mine, where, uh, the student doesn't originally, um, get identified as gifted, what does that process like, look like? So it's, it's second grade, don't get the identification, is there another opportunity in third grade, or is it something where, um, you know, potentially a parent has to appeal, because previously, there was like a window of opportunity. If you missed the window, then you couldn't get into the gifted program. So now, you know, can you describe some of the windows of opportunity that they're gonna be there for families?
Absolutely, and our windows are posted on our website and included in the plan. Uh, we basically test from August all the way till June, and we start again in July. And so we do have an open, uh, referral policy. We do have select windows, just because it's easier on my staff to be able to go out and to, uh, test the students. But for example, military, new to the system, uh, we, we test them immediately. And if a student doesn't qualify in second grade, they always have the opportunity to be referred again going into third grade, and then we try and pick up those students again in fourth grade, and anyone can refer a student.
Okay, so it is as simple as the parent can email their, their teacher or their administrator over the summer, you know, going into third grade and say, hey, I'd like the opportunity for them to get tested again?
Absolutely, and I always encourage parents to reach out to me as well, so that I can go ahead and schedule the testing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Verdi.
Hi.
Hello, so I was just wondering, for the higher-level programs, um, higher in age, like high school programs, uh, is there anything being done to advertise those to middle school students? Because at the moment, I know that, for example, the Governor's School for Science and Technology, not many eligible sophomores know about that, and so a lot of people, um, a lot of people know that they missed that opportunity, and they would have liked to been, have been informed of it.
So that is a great question. And what we're currently trying to do is to overhaul our outreach program for all of our advanced and specialty and magnet programs. Uh, we have something on October twenty-first that we're talking about as well. But for, specifically for the Governor's School for Science and Technology, I actually look at the students who were in our, uh, pre-admission series, and I make personal phone calls to families to encourage them to, uh, to go ahead and to apply. And then I also work with the counselors, but we're always working on our outreach to our families to make sure that they are aware of everything that's possible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great questions.
Yeah, and I just wanna add to that, too, expanding the IB program as well, and doing what we can to increase the numbers. Um, and I just looked through the website, I love the handbook, uh, and all that you have, um, here, it, you could see that the updates really look great.
Thank you so much. It's a team effort.
Yes, thank you.
And Dr. Beckerdite, I would say that we have a very good problem in Newport News. We have so many options. That is part of the challenge as to why we may not have a lot of students in a particular program, because students have lots of options.
We do.
Uh, especially in high school.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else, board members? This is exciting.
Thank you so much.
Oh, Dr. Rogers, yes?
I wanted to answer Mr. Verdi's, is that production name right, Verdi? Uh, his question, uh, a little more directly. Um, this coming Monday, October twenty-first, at five-thirty PM at Gildersleeve Middle School, we're having a magnet and academies programs preview night for all families to come and see all of the advanced-level programming that we have to offer. So I invite you and all other families to come out. Gildersleeve Middle School from five-thirty to seven-thirty, is that accurate?
I think it's on.
It's there, um, but that'll be a great opportunity, first opportunity for us to take a look at the advanced-level program that we have.
And it is a drop-in, it's, you don't have to stay there that entire time.
Drop-in, and you get some additional information about the, uh, open houses for specialized programs, okay?
Right, thank you so much.
Okay, continuing with Reports and Information, five point zero three, attendance report, five point zero four, membership report, five point zero five, the construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five point zero six, comments by the superintendent, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to start my comments first by thanking Mr. Douglas Brown, Mr., uh, Douglas Brown, because he grabbed me maybe last year, maybe a little bit the year before, and introduced me to Wallops Island, which I knew nothing about. Um, I did have the opportunity to talk with one of our supervisors, Ms. Tammy Byron, as well as Elizabeth Jackson, who was our grant writer. And we are happy to say that Newport News Public Schools has been awarded a Department of Defense Education Activity Grant for two million dollars, um, for STEM education. We're really excited about that. The funding is part of the Mission STEM Initiative, and it will provide learning opportunities for students in twelve schools, elementary through high school. It's a five-year grant, and it will increase our STEM education through after-school robotics programs and space camp, including Mr. Brown, and overnight summer space camp for our high school students at Wallop Island, Wallops Island. So thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, I will say, he was a little bit relentless. Students will have the opportunity to work with STEM professionals, uh, we will form a new partnership with the Virginia Space Flight Academy, so we are excited about that. Additionally, short films created by our students will debut at the Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival this weekend at the Ferguson Center for the Arts, right down the street at CNU. Eleven short films will be shown, out of the eleven, six of which our students wrote, produced, and starred in. The matinee film screening on October nineteenth and twentieth are free and open to the public, so we encourage the public to come out and support our students. Please visit our website for tickets. The film festival weekend will also feature two evening red carpet events, a screening as well as an award ceremony. Newport News Public Schools partnered with Next Generation Storytellers to bring industry professionals and the movie-making experience to our students from start to finish. Our Family Empowerment Series will kick off with a forum called Your Mental Health Matters, Make It a Priority. This will be held Thursday, October seventeenth, from five-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM at Heritage High School. The event is free and open to everyone. Forum attendees will enjoy dinner and experience a resource fair with service providers, providers, and a panel discussion, which will be led by our students and school and community leaders. We also want to invite you to the Marching Band Expo on October seventeenth, which is this coming, uh, Thursday, I believe, at Todd Stadium at six-thirty. The event is free, so this will be a great night for a family. It will feature musicians from each high school band, and they will be accompanied by eighth-grade band students from every middle school, as well as our elementary drum, school drum lines. We do have two elementary drum lines. Please come out and support our student musicians and see why our school division, once again, has been designated as one of the best communities for, for music education. Students, families, and members of our school community are also invited to attend, as Dr. Rogers pointed out, our first mat, for the year, our first magnet and specialty programs preview night on Monday, October twenty-first, held right down the street at Gildersleeve Middle School from five-thirty to seven PM. Join us, learn more about our distinctive educational programs from our administrators, teachers, and students. And I will just go on record and say, I'm really proud that, uh, we have these programs. We were the first in the region to have specialty programs, academies, and magnet programs. October is STAN Month here in Newport News. STAN is a student-led initiative which challenges students to work together to create and maintain positive school cultures and, um, discourage harassing behaviors. On October the third, STAN Night was held right here at Todd Stadium. Hundreds of students signed an anti-bullying pledge before participating in the annual bullying prevention walk during halftime of the football game. Board members and I both enjoyed participating in this annual event. Families and staff, this is National Principals Month. We want to thank our principals for their leadership and commitment to our students, families, and staff. We appreciate your dedication, your vision, and the countless hours you invest in our school communities. And finally, October is Disability History and Awareness Month. This is a time to recognize- This is a time to recognize and celebrate the contributions of history of individuals with disabilities and increase public awareness and the rights of individuals with disabilities. And as Mr. Hunter always says, great things are happening in Newport News, and this concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, thank you, Ben, those are exciting.
Lots of things.
Let's see here, um, do we have any other cards this evening?
No cards.
So now we will have a moment to hear matters by the school board. We'll begin with our student rep, Mr. Fante.
I just wanted to say that I and all of the other students, we all really appreciate all of the gifted opportunities and programs that are available to us and all of the opportunities for success that Newport News Public Schools gives us. Also, the sage students for the Superintendent's Advisory Group on Education have been selected for this school year. Last meet, last week, I met with Dr. Mitchell and Mrs. Brooks to plan the agenda for our first meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, October 23rd. We look forward to an exciting year. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
All right, well, uh, yeah, really exciting night. I think a lot of, uh, very positive things happening, especially in our gifted program. I'm really excited about that, really excited about the, um, the program there and what the new design is going to mean for all of our students, the opportunities that, and the doors that it will open up for, for all of our students to get a chance to, to be recognized as gifted, because we do have a significant gifted population and we want to make sure that, uh, all of the students get an opportunity to be recognized. And I think that, um, this new program and the new redesign is really going to facilitate that. Also, very excited about Wallops Island. Yes, I have been excited about that for two, for two years, talking about Wallops Island. So really excited that, uh, kids are going to get a chance to go to, um, experience NASA Wallops Island. There are jobs there, uh, NASA tries to get students to come and work there, uh, after college. So all of the opportunities that students get a chance to go to camp there and become familiar with the area and like it there, then that, those are, you know, uh, folks that can stay here locally and, and work, um, work here in Hampton Roads area. So, um, those are, uh, you know, I think a great opportunity, great STEM jobs that are available to, to students. Uh, and, uh, it's a win-win as far as, uh, students getting a chance to learn about science over the summer. So really excited about that. Of course, very excited about, um, next month is going to be our VSBA Annual Conference. Uh, very appreciative of, um, the, uh, folks in Newport News have supported me to be a board member of Distinction, um, again, which is a, a difficult, um, a, a difficult badge to earn, uh, but very, uh, glad to be a part of an education board where we're educating ourselves and constantly trying to learn. And so going to the VSBA Annual Conference, that's how I learned about Wallops Island. Uh, that's how I, I learned about our, um, our student refurbishment program that we use, lots of things. Uh, I try to make sure that every time I go, bring something back to the school division that's going to benefit students. And, uh, this year will be no different. Looking forward to, uh, Mr. Verdi being there as our student reps are going to get a chance to go through their governance training as well and, uh, get to see some of our students, uh, shine at the performance hour. Students film the VSBA Annual Conference every year. That's one of the, uh, I think, uh, little-known, uh, it's a, it's a badly-kept secret. We should, we should make more of a deal out of that because we are the one, uh, school division that is tasked every single year. We get the gig of filming the entire VSBA Annual Conference, and it's filmed by our students in our telecommunications department. So, uh, hats off to Mr. Price and the work that those students do. I'm also excited, I'm trying to clear my calendar to make sure I get to the red carpet for 11 student films, uh, Friday and Saturday. So, uh, looking forward to that, just so many things to do, uh, within our school division, so many great events that are going on. It's hard to choose which ones to go to, so I try to go to as many as I can. And I hope that everyone has a happy Thanksgiving, uh, by the next time we see you all.
And Mr. Brown, I will add, in terms of the conference, the VSBA Conference, Dr. Rogers and myself will be representing Newport News. We are presenting at a session.
All right, yeah.
See you, see you there.
Mr. Harris?
Uh, thank you, um, Madam, uh, Chairman. Well, I, I would like to keep it simple. Uh, I want to start out by thanking, uh, my esteemed colleagues here on the board, uh, Madam, uh, Superintendent, all of the administration. I don't think, uh, you all get enough credit, especially administration. I don't think you get enough credit for how hard this job is. You know, a lot of people, you know, will sit in our audience and say, hey, it's easy, easy, easy. But having been on this board for eight years, uh, it is highly stressful at times. The last five years has been pretty difficult. But what I can say is, uh, in the midst of, uh, uh, a lot of, um, ups and downs that we've had the last five years, I can clearly say this board has stood firm on their decisions and actually looking out for the best of every student. Now, it's difficult to do, uh, but we have been a board that has been able to argue in the back room, you know, get highly contentious at times, but, uh, people have came forth, you know, still to support this school division. Uh, we see a lot of division from that side of the aisle, uh, you know, a lot, tons of emails, hate emails every day or, or things of this nature that you would be just completely, uh, you know, you, you aren't aware of, but it a, it is a tough job. And I just want to thank you all for all, all that you do and all that the administration do and continue to do. Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mrs. Alger?
I've been out to visit schools and I, I am so excited about the fact that, uh, no matter what school I went to, um, you could see the instructional goals were the same, uh, for various grade levels. A lot of, uh, language-rich instructional charts, I mean, and it was really wonderful. The buildings looked great, um, you could tell they had custodians, are working hard, making sure they're maintaining the buildings, classrooms in order, so I'm, I'm just really excited. And we will continue to visit, uh, different buildings and, and continue to encourage folks, uh, as we, you know, go through the year, first quarter is about to, you know, head up and it gets a little tougher. And, and that's the time we have to be even more positive and, and, uh, and more encouraging. So thank you all and, uh, and thank you for, for what you do, um, and a shout out to our principals, uh, for, um, for this month. Thank you.
Wonderful, Mr. Hunter?
Uh, thank you, Miss, uh, Madam Chairman. I usually don't say a lot, but today I will say something. You're, you're up here looking at us as board members and, um, we are, we are up here because of you. Uh, there's nothing more patriotic than going out and vote. So to my 18-year-olds who are watching, who just turned 18, please go out and register it. There's nothing more patriotic than casting your vote. It's so important, no matter what party you're with, but this is what we do, you know, training for leadership. You know, this, you could not do anything more important in your life than going out and voting. You know, those who are in positions make the decisions of what type of education we get. Where do we go to school? Where do you live? All those things that, you know, can you carry a phone? Can, what can you wear to school? Where can you live? What can we teach? Nothing more important than those parents of you are looking, take that 18-year-old. Make sure that 18-year-old goes and registers, take them by the hand and vote. And I'll tell you, I have two daughters and we've taken them to vote. From the time they were walking, they always went to the polls with us. You know, it's a culture. Voting is a culture, a culture. You know, and we have to make voting a culture. Instead of worrying about, if I'm 18 or 22 years old and I'm 35 years old and I've never voted. You know, it's a culture. We have to turn voting in this country, in particular in our school districts, we have to understand that voting is everything. One thing you get to do in this life, doesn't care if you've got an education or not, but if you turn 18 years old and you're here, citizen, please, please, go out and vote.
Good, good message. Mrs. Amen, are you still with us? I believe you are.
I am, thank you, Mrs. Thurl's Law. Um, I'm just going to echo what a lot of, uh, what everyone has said. There are good things happening, there's so much, so many good things happening. We're going to have to divide and conquer some evenings. This could be a schoolwork presence with all these wonderful events. Um, I'm super excited to hear about space camp and those opportunities. I think that's wonderful, um, some of the, the improvements and tweaks to the gifted program. I look forward to, uh, to that and to learning more about it. I will, and what we're doing in the, with the buildings and getting them up to, up to par and looking forward to Warwick, uh, next year. And then I think I'll just echo what Mrs. Alger said, we are quickly coming upon the end of the first quarter. So it is a great week for parents to check parent view and students to check student view. See where students are and if they need to finish up some things, um, great to do it with a little bit of time ahead. Um, so that's just, that's just it, have a great rest of the month.
Thank you, and safe travels back. Thank you. Dr. Best?
Thank you. In the essence of time, just ditto to what everyone has already said. I do want to give a special shout-out, though, to the principals. We appreciate everything that you do. We know that you work extremely hard, um, and so we are just most appreciative and grateful and, um, celebrate you for this month. And the second thing is I want to wish a happy birthday to Ms. Tracy Brooks and to our chair lady, uh, Ms. Lisa Thurl's Law. Today they're celebrating the birthday, so I just want to give a birthday shout-out to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. And I'm going to try to get us out of here before 8 o'clock. So the one thing that I'd like to add to the collective is I am so excited about the way, um, our community embraces our schools and our students. Um, and one event that we've had here recently was National Walk to School Day. Uh, and we got to spend some time, uh, shaking hands with the students coming in and the mayor. And AAA, uh, kicked off a really nice, um, press conference of, on the event. And I, I think about how much we've, um, you know, that, that we grow and we change, but some things stay the same. And it was such a joy to watch those students being walked to school, you know, with their parents and, uh, you know, brothers and sisters, uh, in strollers. Um, so, um, our community is embracing us, they're helping us get to where we need to go. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting.